The bulk of a meeting the other day and we were running up against the city council meeting and which included all of our budget. And so we had to call it short in interest of time to not delay that. So wanted to call us back together today. Let's start out by, I think we just had an opportunity to kind of look over the minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Some of.
Sorry? All right, any opposed? Hearing none, we will approve the minutes for last time. And moving on to pick back up, we had discussed a draft resolution authorizing a dog park at Stoner and the repeal of Resolution 133 of 2012 provided that the Stoner Cooperative Andeavor Agreement is executed. We also heard from the Dog Park Alliance committing a 10% design fee and an endorsement of that idea. And we mentioned, there was some mention of the further discussions with the sheriff and with the Red River Waterway Commission, though initial discussions with the Red River Waterway Commission seemed to be supportive of this resolution. So that was sort of where we left off. If we'd like to pick it back up there, the floor is open. Anybody have questions? Want to move forward with discussions? We're open to it. I mean, I sort of was.
Concerned about.
Yeah, no problem. I don't mean to rush anybody, but just want to give everybody a chance to get caught back up on it. We've got a lot going on since then until now.
Mayor Glover, did you not have some concerns about this resolution at the last year?
Well, certainly some concerns of Councilman McCullough as well as some questions. As we started this process off attempting to try and re-engage the council to get this effort resolved, essentially what we pointed to is that the basis of the lawsuit that accounts for why it is that we've got two folks in here right now charging the city is the result of the passage of Resolution 133. 133, we approached it from two different perspectives. We said, "Give us something that you guys would be willing to go forward with as an ordinance that creates the project and see whether or not that's something that I'd be open to sign." Or let's do a resolution that essentially rescinds 133 because that's the basis of the lawsuit, which right now is not anything that we can go forward with, otherwise we'd be having a different conversation. You have members of the council who have expressed that had you all known what we have essentially established over the course of the last year about the assumptions that are incorporated into 133, you wouldn't have voted for it. But it is the passage of 133 that accounts for why it is that the folks at Dog Park Alliance in March filed suit. Our basis in trying to resolve this is let's do away with litigation efforts and move forward with a scenario that can actually facilitate a dog park. We've suggested other existing parks. The Dog Park Alliance is interested in Stoner. We now say let's focus on Stoner, but let's stop trying to continue to stand up a resolution that has as its very basis a set of facts that this council now acknowledges is not good information. If you've got a situation that's resulting in lawsuits being filed, lawyers having to be hired, and me as the, in my capacity saying, "The reason I'm doing this is because it's not in the best interest of the city." And I think we've established that, otherwise I think we'd be still talking about how we go forward with the scenario at Stoner. I mean, I'm sorry, at Hamels. And we've still not yet seen a scenario by which we can go forward with a dog park at Hamels that anyone's been able to offer. I go and while nobody has offered it directly, I keep hearing through various forms, accounts from the media, some through social media, of the mayor's numbers are exaggerated and they're not true. He said you could deal dog parks for $75,000, $100,000, and now he says it's going to be $600,000. Well, essentially to clarify that, existing dog parks or existing parks utilized for dog parks could be done at Baton Rouge and Monroe and others in that price range. In terms of the Hamels situation, what we've intended all along is that, one, this is a whole lot of money to spend on the riverfront for a dog park in general, and now it turns out that it's not even enough to be able to do even a basic dog park. And if somebody wants to give us some scenario by which the Hamels location is still viable, then we would acknowledge then 133 still has some relevance and some validity in terms of this discussion.
Well, I think that, at least in trying to respond to the request that was given to come up with a way to move past this, I mean, I think that's what the draft resolution was meant to do, is not just to deal with the issues of the lawsuit, but also to get at what was at the core of 133, which was to ensure the construction of a dog park along the Red River. And so I think that we kill two birds with one stone with this resolution, which is why, you know, it both accepts the funds from the Red River Waterway Commission as well as additional funds from the Dog Park Alliance, ensuring no city funds to be used, and also then upon signage of that cooperative endeavor agreement would nullify 133. So it seemed like this was a way to address both situations expeditiously, and I think that was the intent.
Does it end the lawsuit?
It, once the cooperative endeavor agreement would be signed, it would.
So from whatever point in time that the council went passes and I signed this, then I'm in a position to be able to release these outside counsel to protect the city from the lawsuit that's been filed by the Dog Park Alliance that compels me to sign a cooperative endeavor agreement that builds a dog park at the Hamels location and that convinced the city to providing all of the expenses above and beyond what's been provided by the Red River Waterway Commission.
I believe that it would, but I don't know if any attorneys want to comment on that as well, but I mean, I believe that it was written with that intent, so.
I can tell you that whether the sequence of events is modification of the location only, and then there's some faith and trust that the council's committed to passing an ordinance that, a resolution rather, that gives the mayor that authority. You know, it's a matter of which comes first, the chicken or the egg, we're just trying to get that cyclical thing squared away. It's my opinion that once his signature applies to something to build a riverfront dog park, that we don't continue with the lawsuit. I pointed out before, the appeal is the mayor's, and it's his choice to continue the appeal. We already have a district court ruling. I don't blame him for wanting it to go away. It's a good strategic means, but it's not the only means. And so what we're trying to do, and I think I could fairly commit based on my statements last week, that when the mayor signs a cooperative endeavor agreement to build a riverfront dog park at one of the locations, we've got Plan A and Plan B. Either one of those, when they're stood up and are committed, they're more than just discussions and talk and promises to consider, then we're where we will, we have answered the question. Now, the lawsuit itself is whether the council or the mayor has authority once you've overridden this veto. And that's an important issue, fundamental issue, but I think it gets resolved when he has in effect complied. So, you know, we're going to be widely open-minded about what compliance is, and that's the, you know, I can say to you, when he puts his pen to a resolution to the CEA, rather, to build the dog park, I think we're done. And I, I'd stick around long enough for them to, so we can do the exit paperwork, but other than that, I mean, I don't see the need to carry it. I mean, the choice whether we go to the Second Circuit or whether we go ultimately to the next court, it depends who prevails in this level, so.
That's sort of in line with my understanding.
There is going to take time to draft and negotiate an effective cooperative endeavor agreement. Part of the reason as to why we're here at this point and why this situation has gotten to this point is because we started off with bad information. 133 was passed on bad information. The reason for me as the mayor not complying and defending the city against the lawsuit that was filed was to protect us against the bad, negative, costly implications of Resolution 133. What Dan wants to do is to keep in place and hold this bad set of circumstances as kind of a sword over this council and over the city of Shreveport, and since we know we shouldn't be here because nobody's come up with a scenario to construct and go forward with a dog park at Hamels, because those are all bad assumptions that ended up happening because we had folks who did not want to stop and listen or accept information that was given to them. Even you and Councilman Oliver Jenkins attest to the fact that the cost of undertaking a design was something that was decided would not be done by Shelley or by Tim or by staff based upon the inability to be able to have an effective constructive dialogue with some of the parties involved in this situation. And so it was said, we obviously got to do this differently. It was those types of situations that advanced 133 forward, drafted it away, that made it as bad as it is. And what I'm trying to say to you is that what puts us in a position to be able to dismiss the legal team, because we no longer have to ensure that we don't end up with a situation where we're trying to go forward at Hamels. And any Hamels situation is going to call for considerably more money than $280,000, then that's not a valid resolution to stand on. And frankly, you guys may vote in good faith, no doubt, but as we know better, we should do better. And what we have here is a situation that can allow us to do better. That's why the resolution that we've offered to you guys says, "Let's reverse and suspend 133 of last year." 133 and the vote of this council is the basis of this lawsuit. If you do away with that, then the resolution says, "Let's go forward." We've got two documents here that I believe can be reconciled, but one should not be held because until a CEA is actually executed, then this legal action on their part probably still stays in place. And the need to have legal counsel protecting the administration position still maintains the need to be there as well.
Can I understand with the, with the current draft resolution, because I thought we've just established that with the current draft resolution, once a CEA signature is in place, that the lawsuit would be dropped? I thought that was sort of what the discussion prior.
The way it's saying is, you've got a current CEA out there, and if we sign off on this resolution, the current CEA is going to sit there until a new CEA, and that's not going to be overnight. And meanwhile, whatever that period of time is, this legal action is still in play. You know, I don't know, I'm not an attorney. Can an attorney go before the court and say, "I think we got a solution. Can we stop everything for the next six months until we can negotiate?" I don't know if they can or if they can't. I'm sure that would be something that in good faith, the dog park would like to see us move forward and might consider that as.
I've got a deadline of Monday, which for me practically is Friday. Most of the work is done, finishing touches, whatever. And I had my thought here today, is if there's a meeting Wednesday, that we can answer some of these questions that the mayor's concerned about, the Red River Waterway's willingness to change, things like that, you know, we can backpedal it at least until Friday, if not Monday, and I'd be willing to work with my brethren over there to put it off longer once, once I met my requirement. I don't want to get into next year because the rules, the procedural rules for me change January 1 of 2014. So I want to file my paperwork, which means they probably have to read it or at least have to wait to read it until later, but I want to get my stuff over with so that I can meet my professional responsibility requirements. Other than that, I'm certainly amenable if there's something actually happening, and that's the key to it. If we're just talking, then we can go ahead and litigate the principal question of whether the city council or the mayor makes the decision and whether the charter says that the city council of governing authority flies. And we can answer that legal question, we can take Stoner off the table. I'm not trying to confuse it, but I saw that if Stoner is a way to get out of this and it makes the mayor happy with his concerns and makes the council happy, everybody's happy, we'd have a win, win, win all the way around. So that's, that's, I think that what you've done there in that resolution does that.
And I still want to understand if that results in the ending of the lawsuit.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, to an extent, the council drives this lawsuit a whole lot more, in all due respect, Dan, the council drives this lawsuit a whole lot more than the Dog Park Alliance does. To the extent, if a new resolution is in fact passed, we would be obligated as officers of court to advise the Second Circuit of that. And if that resolution erodes the basis of the previous lawsuit, the Second Circuit needs to be made aware of that. So you guys are in charge of this, to be quite frank.
We're litigators, y'all legislators.
Yeah, you know, we understand that part, but what we're trying to, I think, determine is with the passage of this draft ordinance, and I think I've gotten this question answered, but I'm just going to restate it again. I mean, I think what we're saying is that, yes, there could be some time in the drafting of the cooperative endeavor agreement, but that upon signing of that, it would, it would nullify the basis of the lawsuit, and that is what I've heard confirmed.
So it sounds like.
Did anybody hear differently?
No.
I'm just trying to clarify, just make sure I'm hearing correctly. Okay.
So let me ask. So it sounds like what I'm hearing from the mayor is, I don't know that I'd be comfortable signing this particular resolution, but I'm really not going to be free from the, from the, I guess, the very initial, what was it?
133.
Yeah, 133. And let me, let me just throw this in, Oliver. Mayor Glover, what I've been kind of picking up on talking to the people with the Dog Alliance is that there's a trust factor here, I guess, with the council and whether the mayor and the Dog Alliance. I guess it comes down to who trusts who with what. It sounds like that we need to be able to trust the mayor to the point where the fact where if we get rid of, what was yours, two, if we get rid of 133. It sounds like if we get rid of 133, we need to be able to trust our mayor, this is what I've been from the Dog Alliance, to proceed with the dog park. It sounds like if, if, if we support the resolution that's on the agenda that was postponed, right, President, Sean? If we support appealing 133, help me out, Oliver. If we support that, then who's to say that the mayor is going to proceed with the dog park? That's what I've been getting. It's like if we, so, okay, mayor, we'll support this, and at the same time, the mayor might decide, he's not going to go through it. So it sounds like a trust something is missing here between everybody involved. I mean, I'm willing to support the resolution that you have on the agenda, but at the same time, I realize and acknowledge the fact that the Dog Alliance people are saying that, you know, he doesn't have to be committed to doing what it is that he was, you know, asked to do. So I don't, that's kind of like where I'm at, where I am right now. It's like, who do you trust right here? Or at what point does anybody trust anybody? You know, there has to be a breaking point here.
Well, and I think that's, again, I mean, I think not just in dealing with that issue, but in several of the issues here, that's sort of why the draft resolution was drafted in the way that it was, is that it satisfies the mayor's concerns over the cost funding and the location development, you know, being that his concerns over the Hamels location, so moving to the Stoner and taking into some of those cost items, it addresses that, but it also addresses those other concerns by not nullifying 133 until the cooperative endeavor agreement is signed. And so we take that trust factor out of it. And so I think that's where we tried to be sensitive with this as a compromise, that it addressed concerns on both sides and resulted in what we wanted to have the result be, which was a, you know, a dog park that was constructed without the city being on the hook for additional funding. So that's, that was the attempt to address in this draft resolution, so.
And at the same time, I can see what the mayor is saying. I can't sign off on both. Right?
Well, can I just?
Go ahead.
Couple of things. When it comes to issues of trust and your word, you know, that's all that any of us have when it comes to our, what we bring to these processes, whether or not people can trust in and rely on what we say, and that what we say ultimately ends up being what we do. And so I am here essentially establishing what it is that I say that I intend to do and will do in order to resolve this situation. If there are folks who do not trust me, then understand that I have the same issues of trying to trust them. But I'm here in good faith because I believe that this is a situation that, as I have said on numerous occasions, has occupied far too much of the public space and is something that we should have moved beyond a very long time ago. But because of the fact that we have individuals who believe that they ought to be able to direct actions in certain ways under certain circumstances despite what the actual truth may be of what those circumstances are, as mayor, I'm compelled to stand up and protect the interests of the city of Shreveport. The basis, the assumptions, all of the foundation of 133 has been shown to not in fact be a good policy for the city of Shreveport. Now, whether we hopefully end up being able to resolve the question of whether or not the council has the ability to be able to compel or direct the mayor to do what is not in the best interest of the city, you know, that's an issue that we ought to leave for another date, but understanding is that the foundation of my concern for why it is that I'm here, because what you have is a set of facts that don't line up with the truth and that is signed off on and embraced and established as policy would be harmful to the interest of the city. Because at this point, if I say, all right, where's the pen? Let's go sign 133. At that point, that does away with the lawsuit. The next problem becomes what it is that we tried to do going all the way back to August when we started meeting with you guys. Here's a draft ordinance. Here is what the staff has projected the cost of the project to be, you know, or here's a resolution that could allow us to be able to rescind the effects of 133 and send the dog park discussion in terms of where we'll do it and how we'll do it in another direction. And so that, that's kind of why we're here. If we were to do and sign off on 133, at that point, it puts it back into you all's school. And then at that point, Dan and Cynthia and the Dog Park Alliance have to look at you guys to say, "All right, let's build a dog park at Hamels for $280,000." Or let's build a dog park at Hamels for the amount that we know it needs to cost, and so now we've got to figure out amongst ourselves what's important eventually, because I've got to sign off on the interpretation, of where we would go and get those additional dollars from. Because what we presented was a project at Hamels that would be $580,000. Response that we got back from you all in the council was, "Well, you know, mayor, they believe that you lost Shelley and Tim and the rest of the staff around and would tell them to come back with a number that would be extraordinarily high." And so what we would need are some independent numbers to be able to determine whether or not what the staff has given is actually correct. We did that. That number came back, we had two bids, one was $640,000, the other one was $690,000, substantially even more than what the staff gave. And so we thought that would be enough for the council and for the public. And I think it in large part accounts for why it is that we're no longer talking about Hamels, but instead trying to resolve this situation around Stoner, which represents some progress. But we've got to go just a little bit further and establish the fact that it's the council's unanimous passage of Resolution 133 that directs me to do something that is harmful to the city and my refusal to do so, which is why these folks have filed a lawsuit. And what they want is for you guys to stand solidly behind that despite the fact that you now know it's not in the best interest of the city. And what I'm saying is, that doesn't make sense to me.
But doesn't the, the signing of the cooperative endeavor agreement, I mean, and I'm trying to understand also because obviously not being an attorney and not being a party to this lawsuit either, there are aspects of this case that I'm less familiar with. And so one of those being the timeline, the time schedule that is involved with the court case is not something that I'm as familiar with. So, but, but, you know, as I'm hearing, I'm hearing there's the issues of, you know, the position that the mayor just expressed, which we've heard a few times. And I think that that is addressed in this draft ordinance or this draft resolution by being addressed by the signing of the cooperative endeavor agreement at a different location that we know to be at a cheaper cost to develop and some of these things, addressing some of the concerns that you expressed. But I don't know about how that affects the timing, I don't know. I do know it'll take a lot to get a cooperative endeavor agreement, but I don't know really what the timing on this lawsuit is.
That is only critical because when the appeal was filed, certain schedules were put in play. The city has already filed, or the mayor's already filed his brief. Dan's deadline to file his is Monday, and at that point, we will be given an opportunity to file a reply. And then at that point, or after that, then the case will go and the briefs will go to the Second Circuit for them to convene a panel to schedule this for hearing. So that's why the timelines are important, and until there's something put in motion to stop those timelines and those different dates on those timelines from being implemented, this will eventually go to a three-judge panel for the Second Circuit Court of Appeals. And so at some point, question is, how do we stop that process? Dan's deadline is next Monday. The resolution will be introduced on, this resolution may be introduced on the 20th, but there won't be any final action taken on that until January 17, well after the, Dan's deadline.
I thought it's a one reader. No.
It's authorizing the making of a contract.
Yeah.
So it's two readers.
Mine's a one reader, they're in the passage.
So that's why those deadlines.
So explain to me, this is, I guess, what I'm trying to forget. So, because I don't understand exactly the significance of the first of the year or, I do understand the significance of the deadline for the filing of the next brief, but then once that's filed and then there's a time for a reply, that rolls over into the next year, right? That's not like a reply that's due a couple of days after that, is it? Or, I don't remember.
That's, that's in the next, 10 days.
10 days?
I'll do 10 days.
Okay. And then, so 10 days from the 20th, we're, yeah, we're looking right before the end of the year.
10 days from the 23rd.
Oh, 23rd.
Assuming I file them 23rd. If I file them today, the 10 days we start managing.
Yeah, you're going to have to do a lot of days and all that stuff.
It'll probably.
So our response would be early in the new year.
But we could jointly move to postpone or to not ask to have the oral argument scheduled. There's some mechanisms that we can do with the court.
That's my question, is if y'all, it sounds as though the scheduling is sort of in y'all's court right now and they're going following.
No.
Not necessarily.
No, no, no. Okay. So what I'm asking is.
We can request, we can request an extension, but the schedule's the courts.
Okay, got it, got it, got it. Okay, that, thank you. That's what I was looking for clarity on. And is that something that, you know, if we, if we were to move forward, if there was, if there seemed to be good support for moving forward with, say, this draft resolution, would that be something that if y'all requested a Stoner or Longman or whatever it is? Is that something that you think that, is that something that you think that the court would be amenable to?
I, I'm.
Or, I mean, obviously we have to ask them, but.
Well, if anything reasonable, we both, if both side asked for.
Yeah, if there's a joint, a joint request, without the possibility.
Okay, and then what if we put forth a resolution that's essentially requesting a stay? I mean, if we put forth it, the council's in support of the dog, this lawsuit being delayed or something or another? All due respect.
The council's not a party to litigation.
They wouldn't, right. The, the, okay.
It'd have to be the dog park.
I mean, but it might be, okay. But it could be supportive.
They'd do anything for us, really.
But there are some things that could happen in terms of the timeline. Dan's brief's due on the 23rd. Dog Park Alliance have requested extension of that. We could jointly go and request the Second Circuit to grant a stay of the proceedings, at which point everything comes to a halt. So there are some options, but the issue is determining which option would be selected.
There is one other blind ordinance, and this is one that if the report, reporting is correct, the mayor has some concern, I want to origin it out, but the mayor has apparently expressed some concerns, which I believe the reporting is probably correct, that he wants the Red River Waterway Commission to do it the way the other deals have been done. And he wants them to take the lead or whatever the wording is. And if they're simply going to give the $280,000, we're going to come up with our $28,000 matching funds for planning and development and such, if that doesn't satisfy the concerns of the capital spending, mayor's expressed, and that we have some method of this concept of he, he won't agree, the mayor won't agree, because he wants Red River Waterway to do it, they want to do it, then really this is all academic. So we've got to get, you know, what I'm looking for, and, you know, quite candidly, is more than a commitment to talk, it's a commitment to act, it's a commitment that says, "If you do this, that's okay." It's, it's a commitment to act. It's a commitment that says, if you do this, that's okay. I'll accept it without making them stand it up, sitting, whatever the situation was. But we've still got that one elephant in the room that, that we haven't talked about. So, you know, if, if we can't get over that helmet, that's one of those loggerheads that we're at. And we really don't know further along, we just have to, we'll, we'll, if a new mayor, we'll, we'll describe this next year. That, that's, that's a possibility that's in the realm of things that could occur.
What is that elephant in the room?
The, the concept that we want the Red River Waterway Commission to build it, give it back to the city by quick funding. The mayor's mentioned that to us a few times. And I, I don't understand the legal reasoning for it. I'm not at liberty to discuss that way. Guess we can go back to some places, they can school me on it. But at this point, I don't see why we don't take the funding like we would from any other source, whether it was a private concern or whatever, it filled it within the budget. But I'm a little bit naive about how this works.
Yep. See, you're getting now to what's really at the core of, of this whole set of circumstances. And that is how it is that it should have been done, led, directed, facilitated right from the very beginning. To just put it plainly, what Ken just said is that what we want to ensure.
With Dan.
I'm sorry. Uh, what, what, what Dan just said, uh, I got you, Kyo, I was about to call you Kyo, but that was, what Dan just said, is essentially, we want to ensure that despite what it is that this council stated in September of two thousand and eleven, when you passed the Dog Park ordinance and you had the discussion, which when I raised the point about the fact that there's a higher cost level associated with going on the Clydefand Parkway. There is, uh, an, an absolute consensus apparently from all the folks involved. That's why I wanted to get this on the record, council members, uh, and what have you, as well as staff, that the cost would be greater because of the use of, of a different type of fencing and what have you. This council came in and, and repeatedly said, uh, in quotes from, from you, Councilman Everston, and Councilman Shine and, and Councilman Oliver Jenkins, uh, as well as some other members of council, that we want to make sure that we don't end up with additional general fund, capital construction dollars going towards this project. And so that particular, uh, set of circumstances has already been established and addressed by this council. Uh, part of what our intent has been, has been to try and do this in a way that does not end up, uh, incurring the iron, the wrath of our, our citizens, who, some of whom are adamantly opposed to ideas of a Dog Park, others who are very much forward. Let's do it in a way that it doesn't end up costing us anything. That's why we suggested the other scenarios in terms of doing the branding and what have you. We've gone through that. What Dan just said is that he wants a situation that ensures that there's an open end to what the commitment and the obligation of the city of Shreveport is.
I don't, I don't believe so. I mean, and, and partially.
But I.
Partially that is going to be part of, you know, whatever cooperative endeavor agreement is, is committed to. I mean, obviously that's going to be included in that language, but, um.
Well, not the co- the current cooperative endeavor agreement is just the idea.
This would be a new cooperative.
Well, but, but understand, we're here because of Resolution one thirty-three.
But we're discussing.
What was passed by this council unanimously that directed me to sign that particular cooperative endeavor agreement.
But we're also discussing a, a potential draft resolution that would act as a compromise to that. And so I'm saying that I think that in that, we can address some of these concerns and.
And, and the issue here is that you want to make the repeal of that bad resolution contingent upon the negotiation of a new cooperative endeavor agreement.
And why, why is that a bad idea?
Because it was a bad idea to pass Resolution one thirty-three in the first place and to direct me to sign that cooperative endeavor agreement. Which is why I have had to defend the city, not me, I had to defend the city and the mayor's office against the action of the council and the efforts of the Dog Park Alliance to try and direct me to comply with it.
And your opinion's established on that. We understand where you stand on that. And, and like I say, I mean, today, you know, I think what we're trying to come to is a resolution that satisfies multiple people. So, um, are multiple parties in this. And, and I think that's what the intent here was. I know we've gone back to talking about one thirty-three a lot, but I'd like to talk a little bit more about what we have here today and maybe hear from some more of the committee members about what their feelings are on this or any other action that they seek to address, um, you know, moving the situation forward.
Can I, can I add one thing in line with what he just offered before you do that? Very briefly. We talked about the issue of trust. Here, here is, uh, what I have already directed staff to draft. Uh, and that we will be delivering to, um, Ken Getre and members of the Red River Waterway Commission on the eighteenth, which is the day after tomorrow, Wednesday. We'll have to give it to them today, uh, before close of, of business today. And it reads, "Dear Ken, I am writing to request commission action on two items at the December eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen meeting. I am making the following request on behalf of the city of Shreveport. One, for the commission to approve the use of grant funds previously committed by the commission to construct a Dog Park along the Red River at Stoner Avenue versus Hamels Memorial Park. That is a substantive fundamental shift away from both cooperative endeavor agreement as well as Resolution one thirty-three. Number two, and this is something I think that as an administration and a council, we need to have some serious policy discussion on because it's what I believe to be the best. It's contrary apparently to what Dan and the Dog Park folks believe in. The second thing I'm requesting is for the commission to consider managing the construction of Dog Park. Previous capital improvements, improvement projects have been managed by the Red River Waterway Commission, thus ensuring the improvements meet the specifications of the RRWC and the city. Thanks in advance for adding this request to your agenda. I look forward to seeing you on Wednesday." Now, the reason for, for doing that, uh, in terms of the second consideration, gentlemen, is, and, and Councilman McCollum, is based upon the fact that all of our previous relationships with the Waterway Commission have followed the original relationship that was developed in two thousand and two for Riversdale Park, as well as the subsequent relationships for the Stoner boat launch. And since this is in another phase or additional improvements to the Stoner boat launch, it would seem to me as if it would be in the best interest of the city to do these Dog Park improvements with that same level of consideration because of the protections that it provides the city of Shreveport. Why it is that the Dog Park folks would object to that, I don't have any idea, except to want to continue to be able to control, direct, and manipulate
It may not be that.
As part of this process.
It may not be that they object to that. I'll say just, um, in, in casual conversations that I've had with, um, the, uh, since we've been talking about this resolution, I have gotten, um, a, a confident feeling that they would support the change in locations. I've been less able to pin down where they stand on, on the management of the project. So, you know, I think that's maybe why they're saying that, that, you know, I think there's a, there's a, there's a pretty, um, strong feeling that they're supportive of, of the first. I'm not sure where the, where anybody stands on the second. No, I thank you for mentioning.
And that's all in terms of relevant to that, but that's ultimately a decision that should be made by you, the elected members of the council, in conjunction with myself and the mayor.
Well, I appreciate you mentioning, um, that you requested that, that is helpful to hear. But, and, and if we could, I think, Dan, I saw your hand go up. If I could come back to you, I'd like to go ahead and hear a couple of, um, comments from the committee members about what we have in front of us.
And I don't necessarily, certainly have to for anybody else to point out why this, I don't see where our current resolution that we're considering right at this moment is not in line with what he's just mentioned. I don't see that there's provision number two, I don't see as against anything in this resolution as it is written today, but I'm missing something.
I think that's correct, yeah, because it's.
So I'm still in favor of, at a minimum, putting this on our agenda for consideration for the council.